I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you please call the board?
Um, no.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Ben Yosef, here. So, Gorson.
Here.
Tyre.
Here.
Agarwal.
Here.
Uh, do we have any correspondence?
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we have any visitor statements?
Uh, hello, my name is Dave Ursay. I just want to introduce myself. This is my eleventh year teaching here at Stevenson, and I have the honor of serving as the president of the Faculty Association this year. Uh, we look forward to a great school year and hope to be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good stand.
All right. You.
So, to- yeah, tonight we are going to, um, even though it's not in the agenda, we're gonna have our student activities report.
Well, welcome to Logan Trojan, our new East friend. So, thank you very much for being here.
Yeah, of course.
We look forward to having you this year.
Thank you, excited for it.
I, I drop.
All right, all right. Hello, everyone. Uh, first meeting. I know, as you said, I wasn't supposed to be here, but I'm glad that I am here. Get to meet you guys a bit earlier. Uh, school's starting to go in the swing of things, you know, second week starting off. First week went a little slow, but we're here second week. Um, I wanted to start off just by introducing myself a little bit about who I am. On the top left photo there, that is me at graduation. So, I'm proud to be a student council officer this year. I'm the vice president for student council. We had our first meeting today, which was really exciting. Uh, last year I was on the board and last before that I was a general member. So, love doing things with student council, everything like that. I'm really excited. Um, below that, that is me at Kalahari. We have a leadership retreat each year that we went to, and it's just a photo of that, really exciting. To the right of that, that was me at Hilton Head in South Carolina this year. I caught a shark, which I was really proud of myself of that. I know, yeah, it was, I'm pretty sure it was a baby hammerhead, but the fishing guy was like, like a crazy fisherman. So, it was, it was a great experience, but I just love being outdoors, experiencing all the things like that. Uh, in the top right, that is me at soccer. I've played soccer since I was about five years old. So, I've been in my family. My dad plays it, my grandpa played it. So, been doing soccer a lot. Um, below, that's a nonprofit I'm part of. Um, that is a gear collection drive we did. We collected cleats and clothes and we gave it to Heart of the City, which is a foundation in Chicago. And they gave it to some people, um, in need in the Chicagoland area. So, really love doing things for that. In the top right, that is NHS, that is me at Give-a-Thon, um, the delivery day. And I'm excited to serve on the NHS Executive Board this year as well. So, Street Fest and Give-a-Thon, looking forward to planning those events. And below my final photo in the bottom right, that is the longest club I've been a part of, that is class board. I've been a class board for all four of my years. Uh, I've been on the board three of my years, continuing that this year. So, that was me at prom. Love planning events for that. And whether it be, you know, questions about the different clubs I'm in, how they run, or how an event's planned, anything like that, or any questions about Stevenson, I'm more than happy to answer. So, please ask away. All right, starting off with some of the events that came, some happened, some are going to happen. Um, the freshman mixer, that happened last Friday, August fifteenth. That was really exciting for the freshmen to be able to enjoy just like a mini homecoming, I guess you can say. It's just them and the seniors aren't overpowering, I guess you could say, you know, at different partying and things like that. Um, below, bottom left, that is first week activities. So, student council, NHS, FMP, and the class boards each did a morning thing, where NHS did first day Polaroids, where we took a Polaroid photo view and then you got to keep it, and Pat Wright showed up for that. And then student council gave out munchkin donuts. And these little events happen the whole week. For example, Tuesday, there was free lemonade in the pool patio. Wednesday, FMP had a make me laugh and you could get candy and a bracelet. So, a bunch of different fun events. In the top right, that is Street Fest, that's happening September thirteenth. And then the bottom right, homecoming. The theme this year is Stevenson Fun in the Sun. So, tropical theme, you know, fun things like that. That is happening September twentieth. So, these events are happening a lot earlier. And something I wanna highlight with these events is the seasons, and not like the seasons that we know of, the student activity seasons. We have the season of spirit, the season of serve, season of spotlight, and season of celebrate. These are four seasons that we kind of do here at Student Activities. And each of them, the events that we do kind of reflect the different season. For example, right now in the season of spirit, and you can see that all these events really hype up the students, you know. Coming out from summer, it can get really, really tiring sometimes. Cause you gotta wake up early for school, you know, do all the homework. It can get, it can get a lot. And so, this is really good at hyping up the freshmen and just everyone, freshman, sophomore, junior, senior. Get them excited for school again and help increase that Stevenson spirit. And for our season of serve, you know, that's like Give-a-Thon, spotlights, winter fest, and celebrate would be like spring fling. So, these are seasons that we do at Student Activities, and I just wanted to share that with you, how we continue to grow and develop through our seasons, and our different events reflect that. An event that happened on August ninth was FOD, and I just wanna highlight this one for the freshmen's stance, as it was really important for the freshmen. In the top right there, that is a tour that's being given out, where this freshman can see a tour of the school by themselves without all the other people in it being hectic. Um, in the bottom left one showcase how fun it is for not only the freshmen, but for the FMPs. As they could dress up as their own little theme right there, there was Star Wars theme. Um, there are some cra- there were some people dressed up in bananas. There were some people, pit bull, that wear like the bald head things over their head and like had pit bull glasses, like, you know, but they get really creative with it and they really enjoy that. And in the bottom right, this is kind of more going on with that spirit aspect. They brought up the football team to help the freshmen during the Stevenson chants, to really get them excited for the school year. So, that was about some good fun at FOD squad, and I know the freshmen really enjoyed it. And this is a little special segment, I just can say I'll do each. I'm gonna call Meet Me Monday. I got this from my teachers actually from last year. They highlighted a student, and obviously I'm one person, but I wanna try to show you as much experiences from Stevenson as possible. So, I'm gonna do here is I'm just gonna highlight different stories at Stevenson, different people, uh, and try to show their perspective on something. And so, right now I wanna introduce six people. We're starting off with two. This is Rucha Rajadaksha. She is the director of recruitment for FMP. And Alex Lamb, he is a freshman. So, I sat down with them and I interviewed them and asked some questions about their FOD experience and their FMP experience. And I just wanted to share some quotes with you. So, Rucha, when I asked her why she, why she thinks we need FMP, she said, "Yeah, well, we have a hundred forty-two clubs at Stevenson, which is great, but which one is right for me? FMPs can help with that." When I asked Alex if he likes his FMPs and if he thinks he'd take their advice in the future, he said, "I would definitely try to club my FMP suggests." And I would say they have a lot of influence over us. They know what the students want. And so, this kind of shows how the freshmen can come inexperienced, whereas the seniors are more wiser, and they can really help the freshmen to grow and to learn and belong in Stevenson. Moving on, I have George Handle. He's the president of FMP, and Harper Hill is a freshman. When I asked George why FMP is so good at what they do, he said, "I feel the fact that FMP can shrink the size of the groups down to twenty to thirty kids, being led by four people, is so useful for the freshmen, because they can ask all the little questions and get help." When I asked Harper what she's most nervous about for Stevenson, and this was the same for all three of the freshmen I asked, they said, "I was scared of how many people there are and how big a place it is, because it's different from middle school and it's such a big change." And as we know, change can be hard, especially going from a middle school to a high school with four thousand plus kids, you know, giant seniors and just, you know, it can get crazy. And so, this different experiences, the way that these seniors can help these freshmen acclimate is, it's just awesome what they can do. And finally, I have Ervy Rising-Hani. She's the director of advisory leaders, and Jack Handle, who is a freshman. When I asked Jack why he thinks FMPs are useful, he said, "FMPs help to guide me around the school and help to get rid of that intimidating aspect." When Ervy asked what qualities does an FMP need, she says, "You have to navigate the freshmen to their needs." And as we know, each freshman comes in, experiences different things, but the ability to FMPs to tailor their help to each freshman is really important to ensure that each freshman gets the help they need. And I'm gonna be honest with you, when I overlooked these, I replayed them and I looked over the interviews, and I kind of went into these interviews a little closed-minded. I went into them looking for certain answers. I asked a question hoping for a response from the seniors and hoping a response from the freshmen, and I would share it with you. And when I looked over these recordings, it, it wasn't what I was hoping for. I was hoping for something else. But when I look at all threes, and maybe you saw it too, when I look at all three of these, there was a bit of a commonality between the freshman and the senior experience. And that is how the freshmen come in very scared and very nervous for Stevenson in that aspect. And the seniors can come and help make that smaller. And I just wanted to highlight that here for you, how Stevenson is this massive community, you know, five thousand kids. It's giant. But advisories can shrink that down to about twenty to thirty kids. And that mini-community within a community helps the freshmen grow and get acclimated into the Stevenson culture. So, for me, I started my advisory freshman year, twenty to thirty kids, as it says, and I didn't know much kids. I came from Fremont Middle School, so it wasn't the biggest feeder school in the year. So, I didn't have many friends coming into that, especially since I came to Fremont at seventh grade, so I didn't have much friends. But my advisory was kind of where I learned to get a lot of friends. And as you learn in your advisory, as your seniors help you, you get acclimated into the Stevenson culture. You get to ask the questions, like what clubs are good for me? Or, you know, each freshman gets that tailored need to each of their benefit and help them grow. And this community eventually grew out, and now it grew, it grew. And now, I probably know about fifteen hundred kids at Stevenson, which can seem crazy to know over a thousand kids. But that shows you how that small community, it can grow and get bigger and bigger. So, the advisories aspect, to be able to have the smaller community within that bigger community is so important for the freshmen's development, cause obviously they're gonna be the future of Stevenson. And our senior FMPs and our junior FMPs, the fact that they can be in their small groups, help out each freshman, whatever they need, and make sure that they each get what they need to be able to grow and be able to assimilate into the culture of Stevenson is so important. So, if there's one takeaway I want you guys to have here, it's that going into these advisories, freshmen, as I said, are very nervous. And this can help them be able to grow to Stevenson and be able to feel that they belong in Stevenson, which is ultimately the goal of FMP. The goal of FMP is to make sure that the freshmen come here and belong and feel like this is where they're meant to be. So, thank you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Logan, can I ask you one more time the four seasons of?
Yes.
Can you do that?
So, yes. So, it starts out as the season of spirit, so that's the activities. Then it goes to the season of serve. So, things like Give-a-Thon, like we, we give out to the community, that's the other season. Then it's the season of spotlight, or some call it showcase, spotlight or showcase. And that's like winter fest, so that activity reflects winter fest. And so, the student activity are trying to tailor their events towards showcasing Stevenson students. That's like senior sho- sorry, uh, senior showcase, I believe it's called, yeah, where they, yeah. Um, and then the final one is celebrate. So, that's like spring fling. It's at the end where everyone really wants to get excited, you know, like the school year is ending, which can be sad, but it's towards the end and you wanna just get, finish strong, finish happy. So, yeah.
You taught me something, and I don't think some of you knew that, but I did not know that. And I, I, it all makes perfect sense, and yeah, so thank you.
Yeah, of course.
I, I, I just have to, I'm, I'm the old, if I'm not the, where is the area? I'm not the oldest. A- as one of the two oldest guys, uh, I, I, I jump in every so often. I have to tell you, that was really informative. And the way you presented it was wonderful, and I'm really looking forward to having your reports this year. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I, I hope to bring each something, each theme to each one of them. So, yeah, that'll be at each one of my ones, and I hope to give you that, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Look forward to hearing more, for sure.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So, Logan, this, I'm not sure if your predecessors told you, um, this is the part of the meeting where you are more than welcome to stay, but this was the best part of the meeting. So, you should feel entirely comfortable to like find your way out, and there'll be no judgment.
And there's cookies.
Cookies. And take your cookie.
I will say, when I first, when I first like learned that I was gonna be this, I was first really curious. I was like, what goes on at these meetings? So, I was really wanting to stay.
You are more than welcome.
And I'm gonna be honest, I looked at the agenda and I'm probably gonna go.
Okay.
Not only.
Who tried to get better for you than that?
Not only can he present well, he's really smart.
Yeah, but I'll, I'll say a lot. I'll definitely say at one of the meetings, but this one, not the one.
I just wanna say we've done a great job. If that's the response you got, you are very bright young men. Thank you. All right, thank you, Logan.
That really was.
All right, Wendy, your turn. No, 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 I, no, Mike. All right, so curriculum instruction assessment, so a couple of things for tonight. Um, the first is, we are sharing with you a very first draft and as a first reading of our GPIs for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. If you recall, we had a chance to review the one-pager at the retreat. We shared this with our faculty and staff in the first day, uh, as Troy and I normally do. Um, but more importantly, over the course of the next, um, two to three weeks, Mark has been, has been and will continue to lead out conversations at the administrative team level around the very specific action steps that are tied to the GPI. So, when we bring this back to you for your approval in September, we'll ask Mark to do a little review of the action steps with the GPIs, and we'll ask for your approval at that point.
And just so, you might be looking at the ones that are like in the green color are the ones that are new or had some tweaks to. The ones that are in black are the existing ones that we've had previously.
Okay, next item is we need to have an, a public hearing for the adoption of our e-learning proposal to the Lake County ROE. If you recall, this is something that we're required to do every year. Um, so, we did it last August. We'll do it this August. We'll do it next August. This allows us to, um, utilize e-learning days for emergency days, whether it's a snow day or an electrical failure or, sorry, Sean, um, or any other kind of quote-unquote act of God experience. So, we need a public hearing.
Could I get a motion to open the public hearing on the e-learning proposal?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, so we are in the public hearing. Do we have any visitors or comments?
Discussion, questions.
Discussion?
Again, this is a fairly recent, Mark.
Was it a discussion during the public hearing or after we closed?
I think it would be, our discussion would be before the vote.
Yeah.
This is the discussion for the public.
Sorry.
Yes.
Sorry.
So, no comments. Could I get a motion to close the public hearing on the e-learning proposal?
So moved.
Started.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, Mark, this is about three or four years old now, is co- post-COVID, where they, um, the ROE is requiring us now to have this public hearing. Um, we have utilized these days in the past, not every year, but they are particularly convenient. And I will tell you, it makes decisions about weather much easier. Um, not putting adults or kids for that matter at risk driving. Um, it just makes all of those conversations much, or all of those decisions much easier knowing that we're not losing a day of instruction. We can do it via e-learning. So, um, we appreciate the board's support of, of this.
Okay, so could I get a motion to approve the e-learning proposal and resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Now, I have a question.
Say, anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do have.
Yep.
And it may be, I just noticed this this time in that, in the prior couple of years, there's references to make-up days in here. And I, when I was looking at it, I was trying to figure out, it's not really, is it, what am I missing? It's not a make-up day. It is the day.
It is the day.
It's the, and or, it's make-up day for implement weather slash emergency days at the end of your, and/or implement an e-learning day.
Instead of a make-up day.
Right, so instead of the five days at the end of the year where we can hold school, or sometimes we did them like Kesner-Palaski Day, so we could do this instead of that.
So, we no longer work any of those into our calendar. We just.
Well, they're on the calen- they're on the official calendar that Ring sends to ISB, but we try to use these.
I just have to give our faculty lots of credit, like on the parent side, having seen what an e-learning day looks like.
Mm-hmm.
The kids are like, things ship well. It's clearly communicated, those are still meaningful learning days, which I really, and from the standpoint of keeping, you know, kids and educators safe, like, I think this is such a win.
Yeah.
Eric, can you talk about the, like the, just a little bit about the logic behind giving five days to complete the assignments rather? Was that an arbitrary or what was that design of choice?
Yeah, that was, um, I wouldn't say it was arbitrary, but, you know, that was something that was, that may be kind of a hangover from COVID a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, but that's kind of at the maximum end.
Are teachers able to do what they want?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But I mean, in terms of counting it for attendance, I think they have to have it in by five days.
Correct. Right.
Right.
As a hard deadline for, there, the state wants, if the ROE approves these, they have to have some accountability mechanism.
Right.
For the county. But our teachers can have earlier deadlines for turning in homework or completing things. That's more of a counting for an attendance for that student for that day.
Any other questions? All right, could you please pull the board?
Yep. So, Gorson.
Hi.
Tyre.
Hi.
Agarwal.
Hi.
No.
Hi.
Frost.
Hi.
Ben Yosef.
Hi.
Okay, um, so we also have, uh, our twenty-twenty-five summer school report. Um, Mark, Mark, Wendy?
I'm happy. I'm happy too. Um, you'll, when you ready for a nice read, just some highlights from this. Um, it shows that we were up a little bit in summer school, uh, by, you know, a few, a few students. Um, with that, you're gonna see in this document the percentage of incoming freshmen, come sophomores, juniors, and seniors. And seventy-one percent of our incoming freshmen did take summer school. Either both semesters or one or the other semesters, um, they found in the summer school office, you know, really supporting families if they wanted to do summer school, really supporting them and helping them find like what's the right balance for them with school, but also with just like their fam- their family lives. If you're gonna go to Boy Scout camp or wherever you go, do that. We'll find something else for you to do on the opposite, um, session. And so, they worked really hard around that. If you wanna, um, look at like unique courses and things, there's a whole list of all the courses we offered and who took it, freshmen through seniors. Um, are still our most popular one is, um, our world history. With that said, less students are taking world history the past couple of years than in the past. Um, they, they might be taking other courses like a semester of introductory business or something like that. Um, but we are seeing a little bit of less in world history, because there's so many options for, for kids of when they can take that in their schedule. But you could take a look at, you know, the grades that they, um, received in these courses, as well as just a, a brief overview of the awesome summer school program that we have.
Do these trips count in those numbers in terms of whom, does that count as summer school enrollment for that, like the New York City fashion trip?
Yes.
Yes, it, they have, there's a curricular po- component. I mean, it's not as huge. And most of our, most of our students don't worry about the credits.
Yeah.
They need to take, cause it's, but we do have, there is a curricular component to it. It's connected.
So, it falls under the umbrella of summer school.
Yep, so that one would fall under the, that particular course would fall under their Family Consumer Sciences.
Okay, that's cool.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, also just, uh, wanted to note that we have two board policy, or two press, uh, updates for tonight for board policy. The first is press issue one eighteen, and most of which ream was kind of administrative. Uh, all of it is, all of the ones that we've included, um, are required. But there was one for kind of a Level A review, and it was an update to policy seven colon two-five-five. Um, you can read through that. Um, and then press one nineteen was mostly.
Little minor.
Minor, minor changes. Um, but again, nothing significant tonight, um, in terms of major changes. And the ones that are included are, uh, musts, not mayes. So, we're bringing to you tonight for your approval.
Could I get a motion to approve the policy updates?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions for Eric or Rain? Seems pretty straightforward.
It is. There's, there's nothing in there that is significant.
Okay, could you please pull the board?
Gorson.
Hi.
Tyre.
Hi.
Agarwal.
Hi.
No.
Hi.
Frost.
Wendy.
Ben Yosef.
Hi.
Didn't, if I could just say one more quick thing about it, I know that it seems like we bring these to you a lot these days, probably every three months or so, um, maybe four months. Um, and you may wonder, well, why are you bringing so often? And why do they seem so insignificant relatively speaking? But we get these press updates every three months. In the olden times, um, we used to not update the press, uh, the board book regularly. And then what that caused is a need to every four, five, six years do a massive overhaul to make sure that we are in alignment with all the school code changes. So, as long as you're okay with it, we would just love to keep presenting you every few months with all of the changes that are being required of us, but then some of which are being recommended. And this is gonna prevent us from having to do some big massive audit five, six years from now. So, just as.
We had one or two board members read through the entire package of stuff when we did those.
It was, yeah, yeah, it was not great. Yeah, suboptimal, as they say. Okay, um, couple personnel items there for your review and human resources report. We will not need an executive session as we had one beforehand. Um, that takes us to the business session section, Sean, and approval of multi-function devices. So, you wanna tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, we have, uh, one action item for you guys tonight, um, that is, um, multi-function devices, you know, simply known as copiers, but they're a little bit more sophisticated nowadays, cause they include a lot of scanning to email. Um, and so, we have a number of machines that are, um, have come off lease. Um, they're in need of replacement. Uh, we have two vendors. Um, if you recall, we work with Image Tech and Canon. And, um, really those two vendors work well together, keeps the pricing honest. Um, and, um, really helps us kind of build a system so that we are not necessarily reliant on, um, these particular machines for, for printing. Um, I will say that coming off of COVID, things have kind of ramped back up. So, one of the nice things that is included, not only in these, um, purchases, is a, um, solution that will allow us, um, the capability to, uh, go up to a device. And in order to actually print, you could send the job to the printer and then you can tap it at any device. So, if I'm in my office, I could print out a thing, uh, you know, print out a, you know, worksheets for class or something. Go to the nearest office that is located to my classroom, swipe there, pops out the thirty pages, and then go right to class. It also prevents waste. Um, and so, one of the things that we found in working with our director and division assistants is that there, you know, is at least a ream of paper, um, on a day that's wasted in the office. And so, we wanna get back to not printing as much or printing when necessary. Um, and then also trying to reduce the amount of waste, um, that we have. You know, you can imagine like, oh, I gotta print all these out. You print them out, they come out, then you forget to pick them up. So, you print them out at a different printer. And so, this will, um, this will, um, get us back on track in terms of really our goal to limit the amount of copiers, copies that we're making. It makes the machines last longer, also reduces the amount of paper that we have to purchase. Um, there is a, uh, overall, there is a slight increase, about three-point-two percent, uh, on this. It's a quarterly bill, so if you're looking at the attachment, the numbers, you know, little different than the eighty-seven thousand, but that's because that's a quarterly bill. Um, so all in all, um, the, uh, what we're asking tonight is the Board of Education to authorize, um, the replacement of nine multi-function devices. These are on a five-year lease, and it's at an annual cost not to exceed eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars. Um, and just one final tidbit, this does also include, um, click charges for color and, um, black and white as well. So, that's also included in this. It's not just the machines.
Could I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Um, QLC, is that, do students have access?
They do. Um, and so, you know, some of the things we move around as well. Um, you know, multi-function devices that don't have as much use on them, we'll move to a, an office maybe that doesn't quite have, um, as much use on them. But, um, there are, there are some offices, if you can believe it or not, they're making a million copies, um, every year. So.
And so, it's leasing the equipment as well?
Correct.
So, if they break, they replace that?
Correct. That's exactly right.
Any other questions?
And it's a service contract in the main regular maintenance, is it correct?
Preventive maintenance and repairs. Preventive maintenance and repairs.
Okay, Reem, could you please pull the board?
Who motion first?
Hmm? This was, uh, I think Don did and Ronnie.
I did.
Okay, Ronnie, okay, correct. Alright, um, Tyer?
Hi.
Agarwal?
Hi.
No?
Hi.
Frost?
Hi.
Then Yosef?
Hi.
So I hear Gorson?
Hi.
Um, then we have a couple of first readings, um, the first being, uh, purchase of natural gas and electricity. Um, if for, if you recall, um, we engage in future pricing, meaning that we buy, um, or set in at a future price. Uh, and then we can have stability with our budget for the next three to five years, depending on how long we engage that. This is not traded, so we are not futures traders, we're just buying and, and holding on that price. Uh, we've come to the end of our current leases and we're exploring, um, not only, uh, working with Constellation Energy, um, who is our current supplier, uh, but we are also looking at a couple of other vendors to figure out what is, um, the best price. Um, what can we get the best price? But also, the other component that goes into this is utilizing our solar energy, um, that we have created. Um, and making sure that, that goes back on the grid. And then partaking in the PJM, if you were listening to Governor Pritzker talk about PJM every day. We are, uh, in that program, it saves us about a hundred thousand dollars, um, in, um, offset costs. And then we also receive money back for selling on the grid, um, providing energy that we don't use on the grid. Um, so we're in the Habib and I, the final, um, process of recommending one. So we'll be back, um, in September, uh, we'll be back in September with an action item. Um, we also are looking at, um, the purchase of an additional property. This property, uh, owner came to us, um, and, uh, is interested in, in selling the property. This property is located just south of the Port Clinton East parking lot, as it exists. Um, so we are working with them, um, on some pricing. In fact, I think we just had the appraisal last Friday. So as soon as we get that report, we'll give them dollars and, and have some conversations about that. There'll be more, uh, information in the memo. And then the last item is something that we have to do, um, by law every year, um, just putting it in a first reading. But that is the preparation of the administrator and teacher salary report. This is always in arrears, um, obviously. And so, uh, we will be putting that together and asking the board to adopt it, um, in September. And then, of course, you can see, uh, we have a very light FOIA, um, month for us, um, so that's great. That's all I have tonight.
Are you, I'm just curious, are energy costs going to be significantly higher in, in up for, how tall?
Um. So, the good news is, you've probably seen and felt, uh, individually, a lot of the, um, increases in, uh, basis, um, or the transfer, the delivery of the electricity and the delivery of natural gas. Uh, we have been purchasing that on a forward contract, so we have not experienced those, um, increases yet. And what's happening is that the market is kind of adjusting again, so it's coming back down.
Mm.
So we're hopeful that we'll be able to lock in a very budget-friendly, um, pricing to keep that, um, going, so. I've learned more about natural gas and electricity over the last eight to ten years than I probably care to, but it's fascinating.
Well, we appreciate that. Okay, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions on that? Alright, Reem, could you please pull?
Agarwal?
Hi.
No?
Hi.
Frost?
Hi.
Then Yosef?
Hi.
So I hear Gorson?
Hi.
Tyer?
Hi.
Okay, um, just a couple of quick items. You'll see, um, our new faculty members in that nice picture there. Thanks to Jamie and her team for capturing our new folks on our first day back a couple of weeks ago. And you see some student profiles there of our FCC LA National Leadership Team. Um, so thank you for putting those together. Um, you also see an item that has a link, sorry, that has all of the dates that we talked about earlier this evening of our board meetings, um. Executive technology meeting, finance meeting, site facilities, board dialogues, kind of our mini-finance and site facilities. So, um, we will re- maybe we can just make sure that we include this and then note any changes that we end up making on this, cause the year's long, so if things have to change.
Sure.
Let's just make sure we let the board know if things change. That's why I always hesitate.
And I don't have access to this and it's so funny, I mean, it is open right now. I'll give you access.
Um, okay, uh, you'll see a newsletter from the ELC, our partner over there. Um, we had our annual staff safety meeting, it's beginning of the year. These are mandatory meetings for all of our faculty and staff, and Wendy and I just thought you might be interested in seeing the slides for those. Um, if you have any questions, feel free to let us know. Um, we also, um, have had lots of meetings related to Odyssey. And Wendy, do you wanna give us just kind of a high-level overview of what we're thinking about?
Me, we have. We have.
Cause it's gonna look significantly different.
So those of you who've been around for some time, notice that usually every two years in February, we have a full day, full two days. We shut down school, regular school and we have, um, a two-day of fine arts festival. We've noticed, um, over the past few years, I guess kind of after COVID for the most part, um, student attendance hadn't been what we wanted it to be. So we use that as an opportunity to refresh. So John Bryce and his folks, um, have done a nice job to figure out how to turn this two-day kind of ice, somewhat isolated, um, fine arts into more embedded into what students do every school year. And so students will have many opportunities throughout, um, their four years here to participate through either one of their clubs or activities or courses, as well as we will have kind of like a fine arts kind of themed week. So think something similar to like a winter fest or a homecoming week, where there's just a lot of activities. Um, so there's gonna be an early spring, late, late winter, early spring, a week where it's kind of like honoring and, uh, appreciating the arts week. Where there's gonna be a lot of things going on in the commons area, different clubs are gonna be doing things. But it won't be that like, it'll be embedded into students' regular day opportunities and schedules.
I think it's a really smart thing to do. I think it, you know, is also responding to some of the challenges and concerns we've had the past couple of years. COVID kind of threw a wrench.
Yep.
You know, in our attendance in Odyssey, and I think, you know, a lot of credit to you and John and Troy and Mark for thinking this through. I think it's gonna be great.
We've gotten a lot of good feedback for teachers and, and students.
Yeah.
So, there's, but there were a lot of input put into what this kind of next era of Odyssey is gonna be.
Yeah.
So is this gonna be still every two years or is this every year now?
No, it's gonna be every year, but it's gonna more be embedded into what our school day. So sometimes some clubs will be doing different things, um, will have different events where during activity periods or during lunch periods, things that students can opt into. Um, we have some that decided like, there's a specific thing going on in a course that's like, you know what? Let's bring in, uh, let's have the Odyssey group, for lack of a better term, to help us find maybe, um, a speaker or a performance or something that connects to what we're doing. And then there will be an Odyssey, kind of arts appreciation type of week, um, that'll be going on kind of throughout the school for, for a week in kind of late winter.
So how, how do you assess whether, at, at least before COVID, you knew that most kids are getting sixteen hours every two years of different programs? If people are kind of opting in, in some classes and some clubs are participating, how do you know that every student's getting?
It's not a requirement.
It's no longer a requirement to do, to the, to do those pieces.
Oh, interesting.
Um, so we still very much value our arts program and we want all students to have opportunities and exposures to, to that. And you're gonna see through here, there's, um, a little slide deck of programs that, um, John Bryce and his, his group have put together. The kinds that gives a brief overview of what it's gonna be, but we still very much value that here. And so how do we find more opportunities for students to do that, uh, already have busy schedules?
And I think not doing it on that by any old basis will make it more likely that over the course of their four years that Stevenson students will have repeated exposure.
And we want people to s- see and appreciate, students to see and appreciate that there's arts everywhere.
Mm-hmm.
And in, appreciate it in worlds that connect to them. Um, so we really think this is a really nice, nice approach for students.
Thank you. Hey, you can also see our class of twenty twenty-five report, um, which is just amazing. Um, I always get a kick out of, uh, looking at the top ten most attended four-year universities. And Mr. Gobble, your alma mater is topping the list, actually.
ILL.
Sorry, Mr. Tyer as well, um, topping the list. Almost, almost hit twenty percent of our seniors go to U of I.
And what percentage is that of U of I students? Like, we're their biggest sender, right?
Are we still their biggest?
Right, it's not even close.
Yeah.
We have to be, right?
No, no, it's, it's not even close. The, like, the next one is like.
Are you saying we are?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's us, we're, we're, but we're way out ahead.
Yeah, we're.
Way out.
Yeah, and, uh, the, the one school that's not on here, cause it doesn't talk about two years, but we sent a hundred kids right on the dot to CLC.
Yeah, it's great.
So, um, that is, that's actually the second most popular school choice.
It's amazing.
For kids who are even here.
It's amazing how kind of steady this stays year after year.
Yep.
You see the same, same schools.
Yeah, the.
Well, that's interesting is that most kids stay in the Midwest.
Yeah, that's, there's over five hundred kids on that list.
Yeah, in the top ten.
Half of our kids, and those are mostly local, Big Ten, or close within the state or two.
Yep.
About half, half the class.
So, okay, so, um, then you can see our enrollment is dropping. Uh, we went all the way from four thousand eight hundred and twelve to four thousand eight hundred and two, so.
Wait, let's wait a month before we start counting chickens.
The bottom is falling out. What are we gonna do with all this space?
Miss Monday six, right?
Yeah.
I don't, yeah, the hall, the hallways are just.
We'll look after Labor Day again.
Barren, yeah.
Keep it posted.
So, uh, but that's our current enrollment. It, you know, it fluctuates a couple of kids, you know, every week, uh, but it did drop.
We're, we're on thirty today. From that number, we're thirty more.
Thirty.
Today?
Today?
Today, thirty people.
When I would look at, no, but from that report.
Till today?
This was last Monday, it's thirty more.
Oh. And I, I put last Mondays, but, but this is like from last Friday. Like, the number on Friday was still this.
In fairness, there are many families that are still finalizing the residency problem.
Yes, 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 yes.
And that's, so they're in the queue and getting processed.
So he's still gonna be hired.
I take it all back, enrollment is not dropping.
It's skyrocketing.
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 We're staying steady.
I don't know that it's gonna hit our demographer's projection of forty-nine hundred.
Now you said it, so.
But, not that. Alright, the final thing for tonight is the, uh, district administrator, uh, publication. Recently identified the top one hundred influencers in education. And our very own Mark Anishek, director of the CIA, came in at ninety-three.
But this person's haircut is a lot different.
Yeah. I'm trying to go get anonymity. Bless you.
And he'd be wearing shades.
I can't even walk, I can't walk through the streets.
Now, he's a celebrity we get to see.
Yeah, we knew him when?
Well, I appreciate that. The world now knows what we are and how great we are. Everybody's making fun of me.
For the record, it's not a ranking, I'm not ninety-three. I know how all of them are. Everyone is ranked.
Yeah, I kind of thought it was a little low.
I'll do better next time. Cause you at least hit seventy-five. Alright, that's all we have, thank you.
Could I please?
Can I, generally we allow for just some thoughts, wonderments?
Maybe.
Um, I just wanted to share, I, I was, um, I went to the Lake County Indians Association Independence Day Program yesterday. Um, or Saturday, and they invite, um, and Amy was out of town, and they invite, uh, someone from Stevenson every year. And there's typically a lot of local, um, uh, elected folks there. And, um, this year was the first year, in addition to just celebrating Independence Day and having arts and fair and, and games and stuff for families, they also highlighted there's three or four education programs that they're starting as part of their community, um, stuff. There's H two O program, there was a, there's, uh, all sorts of stuff where they get volunteers. And it turns out, of course, eighty-five percent of the kids that participated were Stevenson students. Um, and I met a bunch of them while I was at the program, they were excited. Uh, it was neat to see our kids reaching out and looking for different kinds of opportunities out there. Um, and, um, I just wanted to let you guys know about, it's really kind of cool.
Thanks for representing us.
Could, could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Sure.
Alright, all in favor?
Wanna hang out?
Hi.
Now she, now she opens up.
Where's your?
No, Caitlin came home tonight, so.
How about?